Real call, this action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering present. Mr. Murray.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Present.
Mr. Kazoo.
Present.
And Ms. Wicker.
Present.
Adoption of the agenda. Ms. Wicker, I don't have anything to add or to strike from the agenda, so if there's no corrections or amendments, I recommend that the agenda be approved as presented.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've come to the. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo.
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker.
Yes.
We're so in a hurry to get to public comments. You want to have anything to say? We'll have another one later on in the agenda. I know she's here for her grandson, but we do appreciate Dr. Pamela Stevens, the Derrick County Superintendent, being with us this evening.
Yes, we did.
Russell County High School Sources of Strength presentation. Hey, board members, you all might want to just kind of scoot, we'll scoot to the side. They've got a few graphics and stuff they want to show as part of the presentation.
So I won't take much of your time, I am not the star of the show, I'm just here to run the technology part. I'm Lauren Davidson, one of the counselors at Russell County High School, and myself, a couple of teachers, the other counselors, and this awesome Chair Coffee, who helped to make this possible by writing up all of the information for us to get this program at Russell County High School. We are all part, along with 40-plus, would you say, 40-plus students, are part of a program called Sources of Strength. And so we are here to share, I will let each student introduce themselves, and they will tell you a little bit more about what Sources is, and what we have done and plan to do for the remainder of the year.
My name's Peyton Withers, and I'm a junior.
My name is Alexis Fox, and I'm a sophomore.
My name's Trace Stevens, I'm also a sophomore.
I'm Jasmine Grant, I'm a sophomore. Good evening, my fellow peers and I are here as a representation from an organization called Sources of Strength. We're a collective of students from Russell County High School who strive to make both our school and our community a better place. During our monthly meetings, we discuss different ways to boost the morale and spirits of students with ways like announcements, murals, kind gestures, and random acts of service that are beneficial to both our school and our community. Following myself, more members of Sources of Strength will discuss our mission statement, everything we have done thus far, and everything we have in store for future. In Sources of Strength, our mission is to spread hope, help, and strength into every corner of our community. Our mission is to help students and staff turn to their strengths and their supports that are all around. We are connectors to help and strength. Our mission recognizes that our voice has great power, and we use it to break the silence when someone is struggling, and to connect them with the help they need and deserve. We spread hope by focusing on the sources of strength rather than the sources of trauma, and we know our most powerful impact comes from our personal actions, conversations, and messages that use our music, our art, our writing, our activities, our social media, our culture, and our voice. This gives life to our efforts. We are Sources of Strength. Additionally, in Sources of Strength, we are taught to lean on and use the parts of our wheel. Those parts include family support, which are the people who support, nurture, and hand for us; positive friends, which are the friends who are there when we need them; mentors, which are experienced people who help guide us and grow us into the best versions of ourselves; healthy activities, which, when we feel stressed, are activities that can help unwind us, lift our mood, and gain clarity, along with generosity. Generosity can look different in a lot of different ways, from donating money or time to being intentionally kind to other people. These acts of kindness towards others, big or small, can make an impact on how we feel about ourselves. Spirituality. Spirituality is practicing in many, practice in many ways, but at its core, we consider what gives us a purpose and connection in our spirit. Thankfulness is a profound way to practice spirituality together, no matter what our culture, heritage, or spiritual tradition. Medical access. When we are injured, we don't have to stay in pain, we can get better with access to medical care we need and deserve. Physical and social, emotional pain, and often integrated, and it's important to take care of our bodies, hearts, and minds. Lastly, mental health. Mental health, all, mental health is all about getting the support we need and deserve to help us when we are struggling. Our mental health is a very important part of living a healthy life, and oftentimes getting together with a trusted person, a counselor, a doctor, can help empower us to overcome internal struggles we might be facing.
Good evening, as we've said, my name is Trace Stevens, and to my right is Justin Green. We're sophomores at Russell County High School, and during the course of this academic year, we have set out to complete the goals that my fellow students and I aim to accomplish with the Sources of Strength program. We have reached out to the community and student body at large on various avenues. When grieving the loss of a fellow student, we've reached out to letters of comfort to our neighbors in Casey County. And after the tragedy that unfolded in western Kentucky, when the devastating tornadoes swept through the region, we spoke with WJRS Telethon in support of raising transport to native relief. As a school, we've organized a drive to collect immediate supplies for those victims, specifically disinfected lives. As an avenue of spreading joy, we hung a joy banner in the cafeteria that allowed students and staff to share what gives them strength and brings them joy. We strive to start Students' Day on a positive note with Christmas trivia that encouraged engagement in each classroom, as students aim to become the first class that wanted to answer correctly and claim their prize.
In the future, we plan to build on the note mentioned, and has been started in various ways, such as a week of appreciation, appreciation for classified staff, a designated week for a school-wide cleanup, and many other opportunities to promote positive behavior. In closing, I thank all of you all for allowing us to come here today and tell you about the wonderful program that is Sources of Strength.
Ladies and Mr. Coffee, would you all care to touch on the training that they had during the summer?
Yes.
Summer hours and summer.
Yes, so they volunteered, forty, almost fifty students, I believe, showed up for a training that was an all-day training on their own time in the summer to learn about not only how, what, are they connectors? And these students are seriously, all of them, connectors. They connect various groups, organizations, clubs, sports, and they, they have done such an amazing job. In fact, just today, one of the people standing up here came to me and said, "We had a teacher who suffered a loss of someone and was ready to say, 'Do you have a sympathy card? Can we get that back?'" So that was something that was already done just today. So almost daily, weekly, there's somebody coming to my office saying, "Can we do this? Can we help with this?" And it's just made them, I think, more aware of others, their suffering, and how when we focus on strength and what you can do to be there for each other, and not on just the trauma itself, there's a lot of healing.
And then you all saw the reference to the Casey County outreach, and they had two students, I think.
With them, a couple of them left.
A week time frame, that passed away, and the Sources of Strength, they circulated cards across the whole student body.
Across the school, yes.
And then got them to Casey County, and then the principal sent me and some others a picture, and they strung them up at the back of their cafeteria at that school, just to let them know, you know, other people are thinking about you all.
Actually, I mean, a counseling meeting this week, and the Casey County High School counselor was there, and she said they ended up taking half the cards, and they sent them home with one family, and they sent half the cards to the other family. And she said, and this is a testament to our kids, we had checked all the cards, of course, before we sent them, but she said they also checked every single card before they hung it up.
Sure.
And she said there was nothing, not one single card that was anything but wonderful. She said, "We might be rivals in sports, and we might have a lot, you know, a lot of avenues where maybe Casey and Russell might clash," but she said it wouldn't matter that we're there for each other. Absolutely, that's so true.
Such great role models for all of us. Karen, that's nice of you all. Thank you. And Ms. Coffee and Mrs. Davidson, for your time and mentorship for these students.
They have grown me more than I could ever.
Oh, you're all mentoring them?
They are, they are.
They're mentoring you all?
They are, they are amazing. They really are. They think of things that we never, that's why we let them leave, because they think of the best ideas, they're amazing.
Well, they're the boots on the ground, right?
They sure are.
That's great. Thank you all so much, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
I think we can all agree, that's the good stuff.
I can tell you, one of the sources of my strength, I've seen students like this do well.
That's right.
And they're certainly on their way.
That's a great point.
What? Russell County Education Association's Certified Employee Recognition, December 2021, Leslie McGowan. I don't see nobody that looks like them people. Dr. Bartra, as you're walking up there, I've already told Leslie that Kobe was talking about her in such a positive way just yesterday.
Perfect, good timing.
That's a good lead-in, isn't it?
Yes, it is, it's a great one. I'm Brooke Bartra, I am the local president of our Russell County Education Association, and every month, we like to take time to honor one of our certified employees, going above and beyond, and taking a special place in our kids' lives. This, well, for the month of December, Ms. McGowan could not be here when we did the acknowledgement on Jan. 2nd, so we're continuing hers into February. Ms. McGowan works at Russell County Middle School, sixth and seventh grade. Currently, she's teaching arts and humanities and keyboarding, but she's also been a math teacher. This is her tenth, tenth year teaching. She has her Bachelor's of Arts in math and English from Leslie Wilson College. Campbell School University is where she obtained her Master's of Arts in Special Education as teacher leader. Her favorite arts about teaching at the middle school level is making the connections with students at such an important time in their lives. She loves watching them learn and grow into who they are, who they're meant to be, and providing them with skills and knowledge they can use now and in the future. For hobbies and activities, we asked her what she likes to do, and her husband, if you all do not know, is a pastor at Free Union Separate Baptist Church. So they're very active in the church, especially with the youth group. They serve on the Youth Committee for the South Kentucky Separate Baptist Association. So, when I ask her about hobbies, it's when she's not at school or not at church, she enjoys cooking, playing the piano, reading, and going on adventures with her family. Her favorite quote was from Jesus, Matthew 5:16, "Let your light shine before, let your light so shine before men, that they may see your good works and glorify your Father, which is in heaven." Such a perfect quote for being an educator. So if you will come up, Leslie, we would like to present you with a hundred dollar check, just to say that.
What did she go through for, I don't know. What's her maiden name? Basically, yeah. Her maiden name?
Thank you all for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Reed, I thought one of her hobbies, we're going to mention you, since her husband is your pastor, shepherding this, Ms. Reed is. That's reason she didn't. It's all her spare time, doesn't it? We appreciate you, Ms. McGowan. You're welcome to say anything.
I might as well not say anything, but it is a blessing to come to work, but do what you love every day, and make an impact on young people. It's, it's just a blessing, and I'm so thankful to be here at home, and, but it's not work, but you enjoy what you do every day.
And that shines through to what you do for our students every day.
And, and we have great kids in our county, and it's, I love it.
Thank you. It's cause of thanks. It's probably. We have the previous meeting minutes, payment of bills, school activity fund reports, financial reports, field trips, and the treasurer's monthly, monthly report for January 2022. Ms. Barnes.
The treasurer's report for January 2022. Balance on hand at the beginning of the month was nine million, thirty-four thousand, twenty-nine dollars, fifty-one cents. Total receipts for the month were one million, eight-hundred-seventy-seven thousand, two-hundred-eighty dollars, and sixty-one cents. Total of the receipts and beginning balance together was ten million, nine-hundred-eleven thousand, three-hundred-ten dollars, and twelve cents. Disbursements for the month were two million, three-hundred-ninety-three thousand, one-hundred-fifteen dollars, and thirty-eight cents, and that brings the balance at the close of the month to eight million, five-hundred-eighteen thousand, one-hundred-ninety-four dollars, and seventy-four cents. In fund balances for the general fund, Fund One, eight million, two-hundred-thirty-nine thousand, three-hundred-eleven dollars, and thirty-one cents. In special projects, Fund Two, negative three-hundred-sixty thousand, one-hundred-ten dollars, and thirty-four cents. District Activity Fund Twenty-One, seven thousand, eight hundred dollars, and sixty-four cents. Capital Outlay Fund Thirty-Ten, one-hundred-forty thousand, nine-hundred-fifty-two dollars even. FSPK Building Fund, Fund Three-Twenty, five-hundred-seventy-one thousand, three-hundred-one dollars, and fifty-six cents. Construction Fund, Fund Three-Sixty, negative eight-hundred-eighteen thousand, eight-hundred-fifty-eight dollars even. Debt Service Fund Four Hundred, Zero Dollars. Food Service Fund Fifty-One, seven-hundred-thirty-four thousand, six-hundred-sixty-nine dollars, and eighty-seven cents. Duchery Fund, Fund Seven Thousand, Three Thousand, one-hundred-twenty-seven dollars, and seventy cents. And the total cash and bank for all funds is eight million, five-hundred-eighteen thousand, one-hundred-ninety-four dollars, and seventy-four cents.
And as we noted before, Fund Two, you spend it and then get it back, and then the construction will be cleared up when we get our last reimbursement on the WRSI grant. Yes, there are no changes or amendments, I recommend approval of the consent agenda items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second it. Ms. Joey?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Ms. Green, is yours working okay now?
Yeah.
Okay. Twenty-two, twenty-three, tentative district staffing and SBVM allocation policy. We always have to give a tentative allocation to the principals for their site-based councils by March 1st, and typically, for instance, you'll see on the supply money, it's, it's again at a hundred dollars per pupil, and then for the past several years, after the budgets have been firmed up, and we know exactly what we're dealing with, we typically, I think last year was a hundred and forty.
Yeah, well, and right now, I don't think we even know what the seat base for.
No, we don't.
It's going to be.
Right. It's the budget year.
It's the budget year, but I anticipate we'll go up to whatever that full amount is. This is just sort of the preliminary start of talk, kind of thing.
Right. And that is, the session ends August, August. We couldn't take that, could we? April, I'm sorry, April 15th is when the session is over. So when this is due for the final allocation to the site-based councils, we'll have that final budget and everything approved by that point, so we'll be able to staff, I mean, firm everything up with all of the allocations for the. Too much knowledge this weekend. I'm sorry. Too much knowledge this weekend. Too much knowledge this weekend. It was a good weekend. So I recommend the approval of the tentative school staffing and budget allocations for the 22, 23 school year, and again, we'll have that back, the final one, by the May 1st allocation.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Athletic coaching and youth league coordinator positions? We didn't have a, a good go-to list for all of our athletic positions. You know, over time, they've been added and, and all these different things, so we worked on what we currently have with the addition of an additional coach for the baseball that several years ago, that they had that position, and it was taken away, it was about 10 years ago. And then if we add that back, if you all agree to add that back, then we need to add that for softball too, to keep the title nine equity. And then with volleyball, with them having freshman league, or freshman team, JV team, and varsity team, they really need additional assistant coach to manage all of that, along with the youth league coordinator. So here, this lists all of the coaching positions for each sport or activity that we have, in addition to the positions for the youth league coordinator, and as I've noted on that asterisk, this includes the additional assistant, again, baseball, softball, and volleyball, and the youth league coordinator for volleyball that Ms. Womack's been working with for that. So I recommend approval of athletic coaching and youth league coordinator positions as presented, and now we would have, with your all's approval, we would have one go-to list, and if we were to make any changes, then that's the list we can go to without having a hodgepodge throughout the years of going to clean everything up.
That's good.
And I'll be honest, some of these positions don't get filled because there's just not people to fill.
Right.
You know, we have some positions right now that have been left open, and other people will just kind of chip in, but it's, it's, that way we'll have one go-to list, like I said, that we can address each time that there's a request or a change.
So these, that's on the list, is paid for our.
This will all be our funding, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, this is, this is what we allocate.
Okay.
Or the board allocates. I'll make a motion to approve the athletic coaching and youth league coordination for this district.
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Softball field agreement of lease. Do you want to kind of explain? Is this leased forever? Is it leased forever until probably it's?
You have the city of Russell Springs leased from Somerset Community College the current softball field that's used by the middle school girls, and we also have used it for other girls softball activities over the years. I think what Russell Springs is wanting to do is tie it in with their existing city park, and there's no money, Somerset just agreed to lease just the field and the concessions and parking to the city of Russell Springs. We thought it would be better for them to assign that to us for our purposes, when we needed it, just for liability and everything else, and that's all this is. It doesn't cost us anything. We've been maintaining it for several years, and we'll continue to do that.
Mr. Hoover worked with the city on getting this agreement for us, and I appreciate that very much.
And I think the only real reason to do it is if someone were to get hurt, and it was a middle school game or a youth league game that was a school activity, we would want to make sure that we had some interest in the property, so that insurance would be applied, and that's why we're doing it.
And then like Mr. Hoover said, we've mowed it since Russell Springs was sold to Somerset Community College, those softball fields, and as he noted, we'll continue to take care of the fields and mowing and things such as, such as that. So really, the day-to-day operations, except for signing this paper, nobody's going to know the difference.
Yeah, I think the main thing for the city of Russell Springs, in the summertime, if school's out, and there is no middle school games or school-sponsored activities, they're going to utilize the field for some of their other programs.
Who's willing to buy it?
They'd buy it Russell Springs, they'd buy it James Town, both. This gives them an extra field.
But you can't have, can't have too many fields.
No, not anymore, no, absolutely not. Yeah, so I recommend approval of assignment of lease between the city of Russell Springs and Russell County Board of Education that's been approved by the board attorney.
I'll make a motion that we approve the assignment of lease between the city of Russell Springs and Russell County Board of Education that had been approved by the board attorney.
I'll second it.
Did she beat you to that, Mr. Murray?
He can have it.
Yeah, he got a shot on her.
You be quiet, let him get the next one. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
They must buy one of these buses you want to tour.
Yeah. I'm not.
Kentucky Interlocal School Transportation Association, resolution for sale of surplus school buses. I know you all are familiar with this, we've utilized Ross Sinclair and Associates to sell our school used buses, our used school buses before. At this time, we have six school buses that are no longer being used as part of our fleet. Age or rust issues, you can see on the inventory forms, I think there's three of the 93 buses, two 96s, and an old two bus. And the good thing about this is, we participate in this, and it costs the school district nothing, but they take care of all the legal advertisement for the, for the buses. Typically, it's companies out of Florida that secure the buses and have the winning cost or winning bid, that may not be the case. All of these buses do run, they're just not, they're just not worthy to be part of our student fleet anymore. You can imagine a 93 bus now, and we've been over the course of the past several years, you know, we've been buying two or three buses a year, and that fleet is getting better. So again, no cost to the board, with your all's approval of this resolution, we'll send it to Lincoln Tynor with Ross Sinclair, and then they'll take it from there. All the advertisement and everything is taken care with them. This does authorize me to act for and on behalf of the board in connection with the sale of the used buses, now declared surplus, so.
Now, these are not ones we have to destroy.
No, no, we've done those. We have done those, that was off of the Volkswagen settlement.
Yes.
We've got those three new buses at half price, 50% paid for, and those have been destroyed, everything cut in half, and the engine bored, and the proof scent, but we got those buses at half off, half, 50%.
That's great.
No, this is, these are just some other ones. So I recommend that the Russell County Board of Education adopt the attached resolution and authorize the superintendent to act for and on behalf of the board in connection with the sale of the used school buses, now declared surplus property. Of course, again, the whole resolution is attached along with the bus inventory forms. They have to, they'll reject them if they don't have them listed, yeah. I'll make a motion to agree to this recommended motion. If I get ahead of her.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, dual credit memorandum of agreement between Somerset Community College.
And shift one.
Russell County School District. This is not something that you all have not seen before. For several years, we've been offering dual classes, dual credit classes with Somerset Community College, and this is just their dual credit agreement for the next school year that begins in August, the 22, 23 school year. Outlines our responsibilities as a district, including the student responsibilities, such as, you know, textbooks, charges, classroom consumables, whatever that may be on some of that. So. I'm with that motion. Okay.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Botham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes, that's a really good thing.
It's a fabulous thing. Ah, man, yes, it is. Yep, they have it with them, too. A men's school year, 2022, 2023 calendar schedule. Okay, this is on me, as I noted, I just failed to remember during the next school year, it will be our turn to host this regional swim meet, so that date in February has to be accounted for in our, in our calendar, and in 2023, that will be February the 3rd. So if we were going to be off that day, we needed to find another day, and I met with Sue Poppa Rockman and finding another polling location for Salem Elementary School, that's the only one at this point that would be used, and she felt confident that, you know, over a year's time, that we could go to school on May 16th, because we would not need, that is a polling, a polling precinct, and that could substitute for our day. So we would be off on February the 3rd, that will be a non-student day, not a workday, nothing, it'd just be a day off because of the pure congestion out here and the number of teams that participate, and we also have so many employees that have students that participate, or just employees that need to work, and then we would go to school on May the 16th. You can go to school in Kentucky on election days if your buildings are not used as polling places, except on a presidential election year. So we're moving towards not having our schools used as polling places, and that gives us a little bit more flexibility.
Yeah.[1793.12]
In the, in the calendar. So I appreciate the county clerk's office, uh, meeting with me and working on that. And so that's the only change that we make to this calendar. We would be off on the February the third, um, and then we would go on Mar, uh, May the 16th, yeah. Well, I recommend approval of the revised school year, 22, 23, school, uh, calendar and schedule, with 170 instructional days and more than 1,062 hours of instruction. Again, my apologies, that's, that's all on me. Amended, yes, yeah.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
I'll second it.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
So I, I will get that out now to, um, I already told faculty and staff, and I, I ran it by the calendar committee, just to see if they had any concerns or questions about it, and they were all agreement with it. But I will get that out to parents now, because they need to know that quick, because planning vacations and things like that. Okay?
Shortened school day and/or week.
A local boards of education must approve requests for students to have a shortened school day or week. The decision is determined by, by the needs of the student. The documentation, including the board's recommendation, is then, is then submitted to the Kentucky Department of Education. As I've noted before, it's retroactive to that admissions and release, um, committee meeting date. So this is for student, um, S-22-10. That means during this year, we've had 10 students that have, um, special ed students that have needed a shortened day and/or school week, and that we would send the necessary documentation to the Kentucky Department of Education.
I'll make a motion, we approve the shortened day, week, and/or week.
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes. Fundraiser?
James Town Elementary School, um, gonna have, uh, t-shirts that are student-designed for a fundraiser, March the first through the 11th. I recommend approval of the school-wide fundraiser. They start tomorrow, that's right. I heard you say that, that's tomorrow.
We're the worst.
February is gone, folks.
Captain Postage days.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the school-wide fundraiser at James Town. I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes. I'll see 03-21 and 03-221.
You skipped one, you skipped one.
Did I skip one?
Out of state. Out of state, yeah.
I'm going to stay home, I guess. Out of state and overnight trips.
He didn't want to let go.
This is listed, but as you all remember, our current policy allows approval of trips if they're in follow-up from another, like, the first round or something like that. So, the swim team is, is obviously, obviously went to the, um, state meet, uh, February 7th through the 19th. HOSA has the Kentucky HOSA Conference in Louisville on March the 17th through the 19th. NGROTC will travel to Kings Island and in the Mason, Ohio, on, uh, February 23rd. And then the Skills Club USA at the Lake Hurley Technology Center will also be going to Kings Island, Mason, Ohio, on, uh, April the 29th. And as, as is noted there, the swim team region three competition that was originally scheduled for the third through the fourth, and it was changed, um, and it was held on 5th through the 6th. So I recommend approval of out-of-state and/or overnight trips.
I'll make a motion to approve the out-of-state and/or overnight trips.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes. I'm about to say all this again. Policy 03 dash, I mean, 03.21 and 03.221, second reading.
Okay, um, as Ms. Wicker noted, those policies, 03.21 and 0.03 dot two, dot 221, they previously had their first reading. 03.21 had a first reading in July, and, and I've just missed it getting the follow-up, and the 03 dot 221 had the first reading in October of, um, 18th of 2021. And we were working back with KSBA, and he'd asked me about those follow-up with that, and that's when it came to light that I failed to bring them back for a second reading. Remember, the first one has to deal with, um, hiring on classified staff, and the second one has to deal with the, um, salaries for, uh, classified staff, to bring up in line with their current policy that we're, that we're doing, or current practices. So I recommend approval of the policies of 03.21 and 03.221. And after you all, um, pending your all's approval, we will send it back to KSBA, and they'll, uh, update our books and, uh, update it online.
I make a motion to approve the policies of 3 dot 21 and 3 dot 221.
I'll second it.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
This is needing to be done for long.
Here at Russell Springs?
BG two and BG three for Russell Springs Elementary School Security Festival.
So you all had previously approved a BG one for the security festival at Russell Springs Elementary School. This is the, uh, the BG two, which is the energy design criteria form, and the BG three, the statement of probable cost. As you recall, this is being paid for not about, out of our general fund, but out of the state allocation of, uh, state safe schools funds. And this will provide the second set of doors for Russell Springs Elementary School. So you walk in, this will be our only school that doesn't have that second layer of doors. You can be buzzed in the first one, and then if you're there for a meeting, or you just need to drop off something, um, you can wait in that second one, or, or whatever the situation is, and then you need to be buzzed on in. So it's a, it's an added layer of, um, of, of protection for Russell Springs Elementary School. We've had the buzzer on that, um, door for, for a while now, um, but, you know, that school would never be designed that way now. You know, they go in front door, and then you're just wide open, but a lot's changed in 20-plus years than where we're at now. So this will be, um, and then your subsequent one, we will have the construction documents and advertised to receive bids, uh, under your next action item. But I need approval for the BG two and BG three, and I'll send that back to, uh, the Kentucky Department of Education. So I recommend approval of the BG two and the BG three for the security festival at Russell Springs Elementary School.
I'll make that motion, it should have been done a long time ago.
I'll make, I'll second it.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes. Russell Springs Elementary School construction documents were submitted to Kentucky Department of Education and advertised to receive bids.
So the, the construction documents, um, attached for the review, Sherman Carter Barnhart, our architect, will take care of, um, all the legalities involved in all of that with your all's, uh, approval. So I recommend approval of the construction documents for submitted to Kentucky Department of Education. They'll review them, and then authorization to re, to advertise, uh, to receive bids for the security festival at Russell Springs Elementary School.
I'll make a motion to that effect, I don't want to drop one.
Ms. Wicker just whispered in my ear, it's not the refri, it's not the freezer.
No.
That's what I was just going to say.
But we talk so much about.
We put that to bed, I hope.
Okay.
I'll, if you give a second, I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes. After we get that okay back, then they can get started on bids and all?
Yes, yep, yep. And, um, it, we'll need to have, um, depends on how it falls, we may need to have a special call board meeting, just timelines. As you can imagine, even this type of project, the lead time of material is, is a long time out, but we may need to have a special call board meeting, that depends on when we get that back.
Non-criminal justice government entity criminal history record information user agreement.
Okay, this is something that's been provided by the Kentucky School Board, um, no, I'm sorry, this is the agreement for the non-criminal justice government entity criminal history record information user agreement. I have a, a procedure on another one. Um, it's part of, um, an, an audit that school districts are going through, and they said that everybody needs this, uh, this agreement. And it's a sharing of that information between, on a criminal records check that school districts have to do on employees, and when we receive that information. For instance, we get that information, only a handful of us are allowed to see that information, um, it's kept under lock and key, and et cetera, et cetera. So that user agreement outlines our responsibilities and, um, their, their responsibilities. And Mr. Gatter no longer does that fingerprint for us. They all go through, um, in vivo with part of, and indigo.
He got mine done.
Advantage of that, it took, it used to take us weeks to get background checks back, and now since it's all online and digital, we oftentimes get them back the same day. Yeah, for the next morning. So, this is just that agreement. And then we actually have an onsite audit, um, or onsite visit on March the 10th, from the state police. On this we do, but not the procedure. Yeah, I got a, kind of got ahead of myself enough to mention the procedure.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-criminal justice government entity criminal history record information user agreement that has been approved by the board attorney.
I'll second it.
Is it Ms. Brenda?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
We're done.
Review of C-03.11, AP 2521, criminal history record information.
As you all know, procedures do not have to have, uh, board approval, but they have to be presented to you all for review and, and any comments. So this is our procedure, um, updated with KSBA. The Kentucky State Police had sent us, um, a sample thing, and I got with, um, Mr. Thurman, our policy consultant with KSBA, and he said, no other districts are doing that, too. And this is what we've came up with in connection with, uh, the Kentucky State Police. So this has the purpose, the authority, um, it's, it's, it's in statute, KRS 160 dot 380, that gives school districts the authority to get the background checks, uh, the agency contact, authorized personnel, the training. Several of us have already went through, um, a series of, of, of training, the fingerprint card processing, um, and then the communication, the storage and retention, and the disposal, and the, and the misuse of, 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 of criminal record background check. So I'll take any questions or any comments or concerns you all have with that, but you don't, it doesn't require board approval, it's just our procedure on how we handle the background check. And I'll give a kudo to Ms. Janet Sterns, and I think Ms. Rita will agree with me, she does an excellent job for us on, um, coordinating this, um, background check. But I will, and I'll just say right now, it's going to get tough with people, because now, um, we can't even give, like, in the past, we were allowed, Mr. Kazook had applied with us, and he was also going to substitute maybe to Derrick County. If we do that, we can no longer send his background check to a Derrick County, or even release it to him.
They have to do their own?
They have to do their own, unless specific user agreements are in place in this separate dis, uh, dissemination log. And the sample KSBA, uh, policy and procedure, um, does not include that. They, they suggest not doing that. But our concern with talking with the state police is, we hate for people to have to pay for that again.
Right.
You know, to, to do that type of thing, so. Part, oh, hey, Mr. Rita said they don't. So it's about $10, you know? Yeah, yeah. And the state police officer has also been just fabulous on working through this. I mean, he's so responsible and just gets right back with himself. There's several things that, that will change on what we're doing with that. You all have any questions or anything with that? We went round and round with it, haven't we, Mrs. Voles? Yeah? You going to go ahead and do the personnel reports?
We've already told them.
Yeah.
Personnel reports, yes.
Okay. Uh, Tammy Maynard, resignation, James Town Instructional Assistant, we wish her well of taking care of some grandbabies. Tina West, resignation of James Town Instructional Assistant, um, wish her well, too. And Amanda Burchett, um, she went ahead, she was going to leave at the end of the year, but she's got a, a, another job offer in her home county, another line of work, and so she's went ahead and, and put in her resignation, and we appreciate her service to our students. Ms. Brittany Blakey has been hired in that position as the James Town second grade teacher. Margaret Coomer, hired Russell Springs Elementary School, uh, instructional assistant. Ashley Copege is another, um, employee that's got another job, and we wish her well, uh, resignation. Jacqueline Pyx been hired Russell Springs Elementary School Instructional Assistant. Jenny Minix hired Salem Elementary School, uh, Instructional Assistant. Mike Scott will serve as interim with Russell County Middle School, uh, softball coach. Lucas Ford hired Russell County Middle School, um, exceptional education teacher, who's also, of course, as you all know, our football coach. Melinda Wilson hired Russell County High School Instructional Assistant. Scott Jones, resignation for the Russell County High School softball coach. Tanya Rexrode is interim Russell County High School softball coach. Lisa Hart, and we wish her well, retired as Russell County High School Employment Specialist. Dustin Carroll hired from standby to full-time bus driver, and the following have completed bus driver training and, um, are now eligible to be substitutes. Kevin Kemp, Charlie Anderson, Matt Brown, David Dowk, and Melinda Wilson, and, and Brittany Ginn. Um, so we appreciate that. Teresa Meyer hired as district substitute teacher, and Caitlin McQuary, district itinerant speech and language pathologist, and Kaylee Covey, Covey, uh, as district substitute teacher.
Is that, um, Charlie Anderson, that's, is that Stacey? Has he done it?
Is that, uh, speech and language, she was retired?
No, we have two.
He's retired?
We previously had.
He retired last year.
And that's the, the, thankfully, will be probably the best we've been in years of serving students, will have subs or I can get brought in with that.
I'm close, I know.
Public comment?
I do want to make notes here on the public comment, I was going to mention the first, we're really excited, the high school is starting a teacher ed pathway. Appreciate Mrs. Voles, she's been working hard on that. Appreciate Linsing Wilson College, they're going to partner with us on that, so we can help grow our own. And we'll have, um, a number of students that will start taking these classes, and then as they advance on, they'll have dual credit classes and education offered to them through, um, um, Linsing Wilson College, and so we're just really, there's a club that goes along with it. Um, the high school's excited, just a lot of, um, just a lot of excitement for that pathway of, of trying to grow our own teachers. Ms. Rita, do you have anything to add on that? Okay.
I have a vote, Tom.
I have a public comment. While you guys are checking the doors on Russell Springs, the south door going out the gym, that thing is tough to shut. I mean, you have to really stand. I can see your building actually starts to shut.
Yeah, the.
So why those guys are there?
Yeah, there's a sign on that door to pull it hard.
Oh, yeah, we got to say, because those are the kids we do. I actually, I check those doors and the other doors will leak.
We've talked about that before, Mr. Burts. The frame has put the pressure on.
Yeah, you see it. I was looking at that last year when I was coaching, last year I got to look at that.
We've actually got Atlas, that's a good point. We've got Atlas metal coming to replace a couple of doors at the high school. I will have maintenance director to check on that door while they're here.
Yeah, take a look at it. I look for the cause. You know, you might not have to replace that door, you'll start looking. It looks like the building's shipping, it's attached, it's settled.
Yeah.
I have one more question. I've been out knocking on doors. I've had the parents ask me about the $75 parking fee for students and where that money goes. Ever buy space for that?
The what parking?
$75 parking fee.
It's not a $75 parking fee.
That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Sherry, 25, I think? It's 25, yeah.
That's what I'm asking. I've never.
Yeah, it's not $75 parking fee.
My Lord, is it worth it?
No, it's, it's $25 and that goes back into doing student activity funds.
I told my desk.
When you collect money from students, it has to go back to student activity funds. You can't take student-collected money and buy a textbook, for example. That's not allowed.
Now, is that ever by space for that, like?
Drivers.
Well, I mean, doesn't all, every staff need to?
No, staffs are not.
It's just a student.
Because they don't have to drive. Because they don't have to drive, there's buses available.
Yeah, so, yeah, I know, but I've never asked about it. They've asked a question, does teacher pay for washing?
No, our teacher staff did not pay.
I said, well, I go to the meetings, I'll ask next time I go in there, so I get back at the experience with the asking, it's $25 and it goes right back to the students.
And it actually works for security purposes also because those vehicles are attached to that student. We can roll in there and get that parking space, we can see who's driving that vehicle. There's a little bit of, we gain a little bit out of that just knowing you've parked here and there or whatever. And of course, and we're flexible with that too. If the car's been broke down and they need to drive a different vehicle, we're not looking for that crunk, that big hit.
No, I know Mr. Gatters worked with some kiddos that had some financial.
Yeah, that just has a struggle with that. I'm sure he's good work with that too.
But Mr. Burts, if a kid is asked for $75 for the parking fee, they pocketed 50.
Are you sure? Well, I got little kids. I said, I've never heard of that.
They wouldn't be many drivers.
Well, that's why I thought. So what are we using for this thing? I said, I've never heard of that.
But it goes to the student account.
That's why, that's why I said, I said that this would right back into something.
Yeah. That's the correct way to say that word.
I know.
You know, I'm thinking of y'all, get those masks.
Right.
That was a CDC rule.
Yeah, well, really after was, when they recalled all their San Francisco school boards, everybody freaked out. I've noticed that. Everybody started pulling mask off kids.
They're going to have to do something for these buses.
When they're in the department, I think everybody got scared and they start pulling, got scared of the power and started pulling masks off all kids.
Before I forget, Ms. Delk, what's happening in this room next month?
There's a meeting being held in this room next month. The Farm Bureau wants, so we'll just meet in auditorium, which is fine because we just approved to meet in the ANC, so we don't specify a room.
What about, what about the mask at the, at the technology?
We can't do anything about that. But I've talked to Ms. Roy, she expects it very soon. They've sent out a thing from the personnel cabinet and they're just, her boss sent out an email, she shared it with me today. They're very close. Ms. Roy was asking about the mask at the ATC, but as of right now, it's still in effect, but it should be gone just really, really soon. Yeah.
I'll just sit a little. I'll make the most of it, Jerry. They're not here.
Brenda's already made the motion.
I second it.
Y'all want to talk quick till we get done?
All in favor?
Y'all in favor of going home?
I am.
Thank you, Ms. Miranda. Thank you.